Three, I guess we will open the public hearing for a site plan review for an expansion of the parking lot and stormwater upgrades for three oh seven Lancaster Street.
You want the TV to?
Oh, I gotta wait to the TV.
Oh, should I read this?
Um, okay, they already started, so I think it's there. Yep. So, we're opening the meeting, open the public hearing, and if you could read, Paul.
Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held on Wednesday, June twenty eighth, twenty seventeen, at seven PM at the West Boylston Town Hall, one forty Worcester Street, West Boylston, Mass., in Board Reading Room number one, or Meeting Room first floor, for a site plan review application submitted by Goddard Consulting LLC for the Bethlehem Bible Church as required in the zoning bylaw section three dot six. The proposed work is for the expansion of the parking lot and stormwater upgrades located at three oh seven Lancaster Street in West Boylston. Read the second paragraph or just that one?
Yep, well, that's, that's a public notice that we needed to do, and then they had a little more, what's the, what's the second one?
Oh, any interested person is invited to attend this meeting, at which time you will be given the opportunity to be heard. Copies of the application are available for inspection at the town clerk's office, whose hours are nine AM to four PM, Monday through Wednesday, and nine AM to two PM, Thursday and Friday. Signed Cheryl Carlson, Chair of the West Boylston Planning Board.
And when was it posted in the paper?
Oh, this was run in the, in the Telegram and Gazette on June fourteenth and June twenty first, twenty seventeen.
All right, that sounds good. So, that is our notice of the public hearing. We got a request from the applicant to continue to our next meeting, so if you folks, I assume you're here for that, the one three oh seven Lancaster Street. So, we're gonna have to continue our meeting because they're not ready.
When's your next meeting?
That's, we gotta figure out when we're gonna do that, but just so you know, what did they say as far as the time?
They didn't say a time, so that's why I'm not sure what you wanna do, if you wanna put them on seven, I always put, um, the gentleman who's on my MPRC, like, seven o'clock, and we're willing to go, and we just give them like forty-five minutes to come in, but I put them on that meeting because we perhaps haven't been here in years, so I don't know what you're talking about.
And what's the date of that meeting?
July twelfth.
July twelfth.
What's your schedule for that? So, we were gonna talk also about rescheduling the meeting for July, right?
No, no, we're, we're keeping July, we're gonna talk about August.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, we had decided last night that we were gonna keep the July meeting.
Oh, 'cause we had conflicts?
Yeah.
Otherwise. So, July twelfth.
There's a third one instead.
So, if we have CMRPC come in?
You wanna let them go in first?
First.
Seven thirty?
And then we have the public hearing, and you might be able to get out of your other meeting?
Yeah, I think so.
So, put them on like seven thirty, or should I put seven forty-five?
Seven forty-five.
Then we can always take other business between.
Absolutely, yes.
Seven forty-five.
All right, so, what's that, July twelfth?
July twelfth, seven forty-five.
July twelfth at seven forty-five is when we're continuing the public hearing for three oh seven Lancaster Street, Bethlehem Bible. Did you have any big issues that you know are concerns for you, or?
Do you have any, who wants to know what the issues are?
No, no, we're, we're just gonna bother.
Let's see what's what.
We want to find out what they're, they're doing.
Right.
We haven't seen a plan or anything.
I'll, I'll try to come to town.
The plan is at the town clerk's office, so you can come and look at it, too. That's usually easier than having it come out, and if everything's fine, you're all set, but you're welcome to come. So, do we have a motion to continue till that date and time?
I make a motion, we continue this meeting, a public hearing rather, until July twelfth, seven forty-five?
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Thank you, sorry to have you come up.
Sorry.
What else do we have on your?
The applicant request for continuous.
Yesterday?
June twenty-sixth, Monday.
Monday.
Today?
I don't like this new ranger.
You can sit down the other side.
So, Wayne, you're here for that, right? That's what I was gonna call you this afternoon, and say, well, hopefully they've talked to you already, or you're here for one thirty-seven also?
I've not heard from anybody on this project.
Do you have a, have you had the documentation, you sent a review, right?
Yeah, we got, I got, I had copy mailed, and I never got an email from anybody, so I didn't, I think I even forwarded my response letter to the man who asked him to send it off, because I didn't even know who the applicant engineer.
Oh, that's right.
There was no email addressed anywhere.
Yep.
It was like a general, I looked online, it was like a general, like, I'm not gonna send it to that.
Right.
So, hopefully they, do you, do you get a response that they received this?
They don't send us anything.
We're in no rush, I mean, he's not in a rush, but I think we're okay.
Who was the engineer, Goddard Consulting?
Goddard.
Yeah. It must be David Myer. His name is, I think it's like Mark Goddard Consulting.
What was his last name, what?
Arnold.
Arnold?
Yeah.
I just, I hope they got our comments.
Well, they did, that's why they continued, because they wanted to address your comments.
Okay.
That's what they said, right?
Yeah, they said they, yeah, they did.
So, that sounds good, but if you can find the number, or if they would try to, we should probably let them know that we continue till the date, and then tell them to contact Wayne.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, if you want, depending on what happens between now and then, I can try and have somebody here, I won't be able to be here that night, the twelfth, so I can try to, maybe perfecting come, who did the review for me, I don't know, just, I'm not sure of the schedule, but I can find out.
Yeah, as long as we have someone that is familiar with it.
Who does all the work? Who's the girl who does all the work?
She's totally down.
We don't get her.
Josh.
Josh.
Josh normally does a lot of it, she hasn't done the last couple, she's been involved in so much stuff, but perfecting the house.
Yeah, so if we.
Okay.
I'm gonna put it on my car, but.
Do they have to send out more public hearing notices for the next?
We continue it.
Yeah.
I know, but what about notification of whoever the people are that didn't show up for this meeting, should they show up for the next meeting?
No, if they're, if they're interested, they show up for the meeting, and if they're here, we tell them it's continued.
Okay.
And there was only two people at work.
Oh, the two people that let me out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. So, that was that for the Bible Church. Uh, we'll jump to one thirty-seven Shrewsbury Street, that's, you're also here for that, Wayne?
Yes.
You guys wanna come up?
Good chair.
Don't jinx it, we're moving, let's keep on going.
Do you want him to switch this to?
Yes.
Can I move to the end?
Keep on bothering him. Stop it. All right.
Yeah, keep talking, you know?
Making good progress now?
Thanks to me.
I think so.
All right. So, we, Brian Marchetti, Macotti engineer, here for our floor, he's a little property and project, submitted plans, just get comments from VHP back at the end of, I believe it was end of May, beginning of June timeframe, we've modified the plans, we put together a comment letter, we responded back forth to VHP, and we met with them on Monday, and we went through all the revised plans, all the comments, and best of our knowledge, and Wayne will speak to it after. We're pretty much at the point where, because we met on Monday, they had a couple more comments, we revised them and submitted them back to them yesterday, and these are the same plans we submitted to them yesterday, showing the rest of the revisions, and.
Actually, if you could, we got a camera now, and we're on TV, so if you could just give a general idea of what's going on in the area, and speak clearly.
So, on the southern portion of the site, it consists of six self-storage buildings. There's two access areas from Shrewsbury Street to maneuver through the site. Previous, on the previous application, we had another building over here, which was twelve thousand square foot office, industrially type use building, which we've since removed from the plan. So, what we've done here now is showing a significant reduction in the impervious area that was on the site before, that the site was designed for, the stormwater infrastructure that was designed for, and it's since been installed, so it's improved into the site now, above from what was previously designed. All of the runoff from the impervious area and buildings here is captured by storm drain systems, in addition to an infiltration basin in this location here, it's underground.
Does this incorporate the property next door that you were looking to?
No, no, that's not part of anything on this project now, it will be part of future urban projects.
So, their concern was screening on that left edge?
Screening on the edge here, yes, and we've, we've incorporated, there's a landscaping plan, I don't have it here on the board, but there will be trees and shrubs along this edge of pavement, behind the pavement, but this property over here, I think Rob since ended agreement, not a purchase.
You want some operating?
Never purchased until.
Okay. And then will this project change a little bit after that, or?
Um, that should pretty much stay the same.
It's all thousand square foot building.
The building just needs probably all the building.
It changed property.
Is the existing, is the existing building on the place?
This is the existing building.
That's right there?
Yeah, right there. So, there'll, there'll be parking spaces up against it, this is where he's got his batting cages right now, and so the parking that we're providing here is more than ample for the entire, entire site. So, just to see overall what we're talking about, this is the underground filtration system and location where it's been installed now, like I said, it receives all the storm art from this parking lot area, all the way through, and from the rooftops of all, all of the proposed buildings, it's piped underground.
And it's the same grade, I don't know whether that is, like, you don't notice, it's not a mound, isn't it?
No, it's not a mound, it's on a, it's below grade, so it's, this, right now, the topography out here, your elevation four ninety-eight, four ninety-six, we're maintaining the same grades out here as your four ninety-eight contour, and the spot grades in the backs, four ninety-six, five, there's two hundred foot offset here to the.
Train track.
The, the resource area, the western resource area that's back there.
Regent River.
Anywhere. We're not grading beyond it, so we're meeting grade at this dark dash line that's here.
Okay.
So, beyond that, maintaining existing.
And where is the train? Is it way back there?
Trucks are, are back here, here's the.
Okay.
That resource area is right next, that's a ditch next to the railroad tracks.
Is it?
Yeah. So.
So, that sounds good, so it's, you're, 'cause you're here for an amended site plan review, so what was submitted previously, there was three buildings, you're reducing it down to two right now, and all of the drainage is being addressed with.
No, it's gone up to like seven buildings.
No, there, there was a.
Three lots, right?
Three, the three lots are, include the same parcel.
Yep.
Same three parcels, we're coming back with the same, same development, which had one, I guess, a larger building here with all pavement, and the building over here, so now the area over here that was all paved is, it's actually, there, there is less pavement than what was proposed before, and there are just smaller self, self-storage buildings. This is a, obviously a larger two-story building, these are smaller, just one-story buildings with just garage, main doors for storage, and this building that was proposed over here before has now been removed from that.
All right, so now, as it stands now, there's only two lots being developed, well, there's three lots, but one doesn't have a building structure.
Yeah, so this, this is one, and then this is the other one.
Okay. All right, well, that sounds good.
You said there are six buildings in this site?
So, we have this one here.
Yeah.
We've got one, two, three, four, and then there's the, at the six, so one, two, three, four, five, there's buildings.
Oh.
There were other buildings we had proposed back here that was beyond this two hundred foot buffer zone that we had to remove.
Okay. Well, that sounds.
So, nah, I just wanna clarify, ninety percent of VHP's comments was really just clarification, understanding what's going on out here, and what the plan was, and why, and.
Disclose your, your conflicts.
Oh, that, I haven't disclosed that, that's right, well, that's right, 'cause I worked for the DCR, but you've already proved that I still stay on that.
Previous meetings we've promised on.
Right, so, just to make sure that.
So, there's just been a long history between DCR, VHP, you know, the town and everybody here, so it was, it was, well, it was, it was a meeting that was needed to sit down with VHP, explain everything, so, so everybody involved here knew where we were, where we were at, where we're going.
Good.
So, so that's, that's really.
That's good.
The process of what's changed since, since we've seen you last.
Do you have thoughts on that, Wayne?
So, I guess, just for the, for the public record, so we did issue, as Brian said, we did issue a comment letter dated the twenty-third, Macotti has responded, June twenty-sixth, with a response letter, they did meet with us on the twenty-sixth, they, we went through all of our comments and their responses, and it appeared, and they have resubmitted revised plans. Unfortunately, in essence of time, we haven't been able to get that review completed between yesterday and today, we've never been able to, I think that, but he did note to me that from the discussion they had Monday, they were going to address everything to the satisfaction, and that the revised plans, if they revise everything as they said they would, which we trust they did, should address all of our comments, so, I mean, I'm fine if you wanted to condition something from, you know, final supplemental plans order, it's up to the board, obviously, but we, we, we're comfortable that they're sat, they will satisfy, and they have satisfied, we just have to check it, and if there's any minor tweaks willing to give that, and I'm sure they'll promptly correct it if necessary.
The drainage, we've had sort of drainage problems around the corner, they're, they're all set, they're not the same problems.
We're back and forth with drainage quite a bit, and I think they've complied with stormwater standards and VHP and so forth, so.
Good.
We've got all the same.
I mean, that sounds like what we're looking for, for engineering review, we'll put, we'll, we can pull together a draft approval letter, or a draft approv, amended site plan review approval letter, and we'll circulate that to people before the next meeting, and we can review that. Do other people on the board have questions?
May I ask you, what's the plan for the, the big building, two-story building?
For this thing, it's all storage, it's all.
That's also storage, okay.
There are.
Are these climate controlled, or not?
Just the front of it.
How many units are there?
Three hundred and sixty-four.
Wow. So, we could store the entire West Boylston, I guess.
You're talking about, some of them are five by five, so.
Little things.
Lots of lots of things.
And then outside, you have the bigger ones, you can probably.
Yeah, they're, they're ten by twenty to fifteen by thirty.
Okay.
And no retail out the front? Just a store or a building front?
So, the existing building will be the office, right?
The existing building's a batting cage?
Is it right now?
Indoor baseball, yes.
This, this front corner here of the proposed building is the office, says office administration right here, that's it, and the rest is all storage. This is the.
And I have turned in.
Office area.
Yeah, I've turned in the MPE drawings, the foundation drawings, that every.
For the building permit? Okay.
So, he has.
That's all okay, I mean, there was sort of this timing problem that was going on?
Yeah, there's always a timing problem.
Yeah.
He's, he's gonna review it, and we're obviously not gonna continue until he, they're going back and forth, but, you know, it's just typical, but he has all of the drawings for the mechanical, the plumbing, the electrical, the foundations, the lighting, the sunrise, the sunset, yeah.
Yeah.
He's got all that.
Low time.
Yeah.
Yeah, low time, yeah.
All right, so, board is all set, we don't have further questions? You had a motion to approve the amended plan, an issue.
What do you want to, what do you want to, what the engineering?
Well, we would condition it on a plan, they're in compliance with.
So, we'll approve tonight, on with the condition that they satisfy Wayne's, or Wayne has satisfied that they're doing what they're supposed to do, which sounds like not difficult, and then?
Yeah, I thought it was.
If we get the, if the.
Well, I think we're gonna be able to draft the, when can, when can you draft the approval letter?
Oh, that's not me.
But I think.
I don't expect, I don't expect that it's gonna be done tomorrow, so Wayne, in the next couple of days, will have the, so I expect that will be done before we write the approval.
So, the approval will say that it has been reviewed and approved.
So, can our approval be conditional, but the letter doesn't have to be conditioned? Because the letter's not gonna be here until the next meeting.
That's after.
Yes, yes, that's right, yes.
That's the copies.
Took me a second, but yes, with you, that's correct.
But then that's good, so we'll have a clean letter, but we'll just, you can just finish things up tonight, yes.
The site plan review will reference a set of plans that hasn't been delivered yet.
Yeah.
In a letter, in a final comment letter that hasn't been delivered yet.
So, they'd asked me to bring five sets, there's the five sets of plans.
And those have, are.
Those are the current ones they just sent in.
Yes, yes, landscape and everything.
And do we have a letter giving the dates and things like that of the plans for reference?
Just so we can put it in the letter.
When, when we write the approval letter, we say it's based on these plans, dated, such and such.
So, our final letter will say that, just like our original comment letter references what we looked at.
Yep.
Our, we, our letter in comment, in response to the six twenty-sixth letter will say what the documents are, so you can reference that.
Excellent, so do we have that motion?
Motion to approve a Monday's site plan review for one thirty-seven Shrewsbury Street with the condition VHP final approval.
Do you need to be watched?
Final approval.
VHP's final approval.
Final, gives final approval.
Yes.
And, and that's amended, the word amended was amended?
Yes, it's amended.
A second.
Any other discussion?
Just a clarification, did you need to say one thirty-seven slash one fifty-one? I, I keep seeing the numbers going backwards.
What's, yeah, what are all the numbers?
Just on record, so it's correct, we did.
The storage facility's one fifty-one, the existing building is one thirty-seven.
And what's?
The vacant lot is one thirty-one.
So, one thirty-one.
One thirty-one, one thirty-seven, one fifty-one.
Just so the thing reads correctly, that's all.
Oh, the development's on one fifty-one.
Okay.
One thirty-one, one thirty-seven, one fifty-one?
Yes.
Was it, yeah, today's, when I, when I purchased, it was all one thirty-seven, we've since.
Yes, all right, we all set? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
In the hearing, we're gonna close it, and we'll leave it open till.
It is, it's not a hearing, it's part, just part of the meeting.
Oh, it's amended, okay.
And I have the LSP, DEP, XNY.
Oh, right, you got all those?
Letters to remove the trees, and everything is clean, and.
Okay.
So, if you wanted a copy of it.
All right, thank you, I, we were just looking for, actually, not even on this one.
It said there's a gram on there, it's real statements, basically.
Everything was all set.
Trees, the stumps coming up, the grading.
I was gonna put them in here with my other stuff.
All right, well, that sounds good.
Cool.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we'll have that draft out, called next week, you'll get a chance to review it, and then hold on, and then call.
Okay. Do you want me to come back?
You don't want me to?
No.
Just go to another town.
Yeah, exactly.
Supposed to be a tough one.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Have a good holiday.
Good job.
Now, it's like a record.
I know it.
Two hearings in twenty-five minutes?
Awesome.
The second one wasn't really hearing.
That's the way it is this year.
We can hope for the, see how it goes.
All right, I guess Wayne will get the, is there anything else?
And you tell me, the only other thing that we're really checking in on is Hartwell Street, said guys, Macotti, and they've been pretty good at contacting us, last time we checked in with them, there was, they told us it was gonna be a while before they needed us to come back, because they, it was gonna be a while before they finished the drainage order, but they were doing, they were working on a building for quite a while, so, but they've been pretty good, Brian and Patrick have been pretty good about calling, so.
Have the people across the street talked to you?
Ninety.
I'm just, why don't you just go with Vinny's laugh?
Well, that one, and we also got a submittal for an ASBIL plan from Saravia at.
Oh, that's right, I saw your email the other day about that.
So, I'm waiting for the engineered certification.
So, you don't need me to do anything at this point, right?
Start digging through your records, 'cause I think this, I'm not sure what the drainage situation is.
You've brought this up multiple times, and they've never given you an answer, to my recollection.
And I wasn't sure, I don't know.
Take up everything you have on rain gurms.
Don't.
Now, with Vinny's, I remember the plan.
I have a plan.
I remember revise, at Vinny's request, I remember they're revising the plan to incorporate that, and I think you're right, I don't, they ever did it.
So, that's what, I'm waiting for that, and I'm not sure it's gonna show.
Somebody will spend money needlessly, let them submit something.
Yeah, that's right.
And then we'll go check it, approve, compare it to the approved plan, and say, wrong, 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 right, wrong, right, whatever, right, and they can fix it.
Right, well, the hard part is they're already open, so.
I know.
I'm not sure we're ever gonna get it, but that's a whole different.
Well, they're not gonna get their, their completion certificate from me, that's all.
They don't need it.
Is that right?
They don't need it.
Yeah, well.
But, I mean, we got our, we're following our process, so that's.
Yeah, I mean, I, I almost think that there was no, like.
Desire.
No, there was no desire to, like, not do something, I just don't think they did it for some reason, because they seem, I mean, they seem to work with everybody on those two front sites pretty reasonably.
Yeah, no, they were okay, I think where it fell apart was that this was one of those where it was trying to save money, and we had, we allowed them to have their engineer do the review.
You're right, that's.
And that's where it got dropped, so that's.
Now that you say that, I remember that.
Whenever they ask us to have their engineer to save money, so we have VHP to do the construction inspection, it's better to have it, 'cause things actually get done according to the plan, and like, this one, it didn't, and it got lost.
No, the reason for the ASBIL is, they were before the select board, and they were asking for the license.
Ah, I see.
Uh, that time, you know, one of the member was going, saying, you know, we need the ASBIL, the ASBIL is not there, so we won't be getting the license.
I hope that was you.
No, it was, sorry. So, he promised in the meeting, fifteen days he will give the ASBIL, so it's been more than a fifteen days, maybe a month or two, so that's why we got the ASBIL on this.
Okay.
Should that run a complete one?
Yes.
Does anybody remember that address, who was that, West Boylston Street?
Two sixteen.
One eighty-four West Boylston, thank you. No, two sixteen is a different one, that's the next one.
I don't know, I can't see the sign behind the building.
Go there.
Make the sign better.
It's enormous, but it's right behind the building.
Alright, so.
Anything else to my knowledge that's going on, unless, um, you guys know?
Well, it sounds like nobody's been in touch with you, so.
They clearly, there's clearly quite a while that that happened. As I said, the only thing recent has been seventy Hartwell, and those guys have been pretty good, for a few years. We actually, I had Larry call Patrick one day just to check in, and he's like, this is what we're working on, blah, 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 it's gonna be, it's gonna be a while, cause we're, you know, heavy in trying to get this building out, so.
Yeah, I mean, they seem to be moving in the right direction, so that's, that works out well.
They seem to wanna follow the rules, so that's good.
Alright, so I think what we're probably gonna do is pull together a list of past projects that haven't got asphalt, and a whole bunch of other things, and we'll probably talk about that.
Yeah, I'd be glad to, if you wanna schedule a time, we can schedule a quick time to talk on the phone, and I can look through my records if you need to, or whatever, and try to talk it through.
Hold off on things for now.
Yeah, no, I'm not gonna do anything, but once you, once you pull together a list, we can certainly talk about that.
Cause some of them probably got archived, it's been so long.
Most likely, but that's okay, I can always get them back.
Alright.
So, we'll play by here, there may be no need for anybody to come to the twelfth hearing, depending on what happens. I mean, I don't know, depending on three oh seven, it depends on what they do between now and then, so. If they submit something two days before the twelfth, and we're not able to review it, there's no real reason for me to send somebody here. Correct, they can give you a presentation, talk about it, blah, 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 and we'll comment afterwards.
So we did continue to handle that after.
Oh, that is true.
That makes sense?
Yep, yep, especially with the holiday in the middle.
Exactly, yeah, and it's, don't, don't spend money needlessly for someone, I can't feel guilty, I came tonight, I thought that we're gonna be here, I thought we were gonna get through something, but I probably didn't even need to really be here tonight, but that's okay.
Yeah, I appreciate it. That's what happens.
Okay, thank you guys, nice to see you.
Alright.
Happy fourth.
Thank you, you guys too.
Good to see you.
You guys also. Yeah, please do.
Right, so at our seven thirty, we're almost on time. A and R Phil Chevalier, two fifty Maple Street. Who's our clerk?
Take care, guys.
Alright.
You have to open up to it, you'll see.
We might have gotten back.
Yeah, so, um, this is the A and R, so here it is.
Alright, we've got an A and R for us, submittal for two, am I, two fifty Maple Street. Uh, for not required plan. And we have the copies here and the original, so if people wanna take a look. We kinda got a chance to look at it at the last meeting, so hopefully it hasn't finished. Wanna give a little, just to hear, let you do a, a little info of what's going on.
Just a refresher from last meeting, I'm Phil Chevalier, um, two fifty Maple Street. We went to the zoning board for a special permit to reduce the frontage on two of the lots, lots one and two. Oh, that, yeah.
Could also, yeah.
Yeah, no, no problem. I, Dylan Bob Smith's pretty good, he does all the stuff, he's been on the zoning board before, yeah, he's been around the block, so. Anyway, we, we broke the property over into three lots, two of which have reduced frontage on the special permit for, that's allowed by the zoning bylaw. We're gonna build a house on lot one for my daughter, as soon as I get some signatures, we can move ahead. And lot three, I'm gonna, is gonna just be sitting there for a while, it's, it's not, it's not an immediate plan at this point, but that's where that one is. And we, I think, not to be redundant from the last meeting, but we, what we tried to do was, we tried to keep the lots maintained a hundred feet all the way back, because where my house is located in the center of the property, we wanted to try to keep the, the ten foot, we wanted to keep the ten foot offset, we actually have eleven, eleven feet on the, on the offset, or the side, side lot offset, for my existing house. And we opened it up to one twenty, so really the only thing that, the only difference from a lot that would be allowed by the zoning bylaw, the current zoning bylaw, as far as being one twenty all the way to the street, we're only gonna have one curb cut, we'll have two driveways, but they'll be on one cut, and they'll split, probably about with that, in the vicinity of where that hundred foot, one oh four mark is, somewhere in that general area, they'll split, and.
Is that where your driveway runs right now?
Pretty much, if you, if you were, again, it's not staked at the moment, but based on what the stakes were when Bob and I first started this, which has been quite a while, if you're standing in my driveway, my mailbox is to the right, the new property line is a few feet to the right of my current mailbox.
So it's approximately that.
Yeah, so the driveway for my daughter's house is gonna be partially on my existing, and we're gonna eliminate part of it, because we're gonna, we're gonna keep them on the property line. And the reason we did that, it, we live in New England, I'm gonna be plowing it, and there's not gonna be any issues probably for the foreseeable future, but down the road, these, real estate, what we do here is permanent, it's gonna be here forever, some other generation's gonna deal with it, and I just looked at it like, you know what, if they're not getting along, or they wanna pay for their own plowing, one can plow to the right, one can plow to the left, and they still have their own driveway, but we still have one curb cut, and it's not blacktop stripes going up, you know, and I just, I thought it would be a cleaner way to do it. And that's pretty much it, I think, there's tons, there's plenty of land here, there's about four acres total. We're still gonna have about seventy-two thousand square feet, my daughter's gonna have well over an acre. The other lot is actually just, if, we put it in there, the way the lines go is, is on lot three, primarily because of topography. If you look at my property, there's a hill in the front that runs around the back of the pool, and around this way, it's wooded, and it just, that's kinda where the natural.
You're trying to just get it up over an acre.
Well, we, we did, but the, but the lines, we, I mean, we could have moved this line further back, we could have made this lot, you know, a little different shape.
Given you back, you know, cause I don't know if you're gonna do anything back here.
No, and it's, and it's technically, it's not, as far as the dwelling goes, you're not gonna be able to build beyond this point anyway, based on the bylaw, so this lot is, is still bigger than the lot next door, but, and it's, and it conforms, it's a regular A and R lot, not a special permit lot, so. But it's, I think it's a good use of the land, and a hundred forty B.
Do members have any questions? What do we look for on an A and R? Frontage and. It's all, as long as it has that, pretty much, they're all set, and on this one, it doesn't have a frontage, but it has a variance, or a special permit for a reduced frontage, so it should be okay.
And that note that you asked for is on there, but as of three.
That was the most important thing.
Yeah. Alright, do we have a motion to endorse the?
Our motion to endorse A and R two fifty, oh, yeah, two fifty Maple Street. Second.
Any other discussion? All in big, yeah? Aye. A poll, any polls?
You made it.
What's that?
Alright, good practice. So these are our copies? These are ours to sign, so we can write them all up. We have to do it in folding ones. Cause it's right on the page.
What's the procedure on that, do you, you sign all, all of them and?
We'll sign your six copies and the original, you take the original home and record that, and I think they see him as, yes, they'll scan it. And what do we have for? Eighty-one P five? That's mine. Alright. Oh, I get the top line, huh?
Chair, you earned it, man.
Yeah.
And right that is, a half an hour into the meeting.
What's the date? Yeah.
Six twenty-eight.
Eighty-one P five?
What's that number? Just the full, our whole number, that's it? Oh, eighty-one P?
It's, they're, you're required to have a number on eighty-one P plans now, or since fifteen years ago, and we just said we'll do the date, eighty-one P, and then whatever number during that year. So this is the fifty A and R we're signing.
But eighty-one P is the number of the law, right?
Yes, yeah, section forty-eight, eighty-one P. Let me just put this at the bottom.
Excuse, excuse me.
No, you need to leave the, leave the lines for the chair, vice chair, and.
You can be the, just do the third one.
Not a story.
No, I mean, like, right now we have Vinnie's chair, and then it can be third, it'll be you.
He said you have the last one.
Quick, let me go, and then he's the last one.
But you're the newest on the board?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Me? You're the oldest, now you're not there.
Twenty-second, well, recent election.
Right?
Okay, that's what, right.
Yeah, that's what, the power.
What is it?
Six.
Six twenty-eight.
Good job, Paul, that's what the clerk's supposed to do.
Uh-oh, put the, put the numbers on.
Keeping track of the numbers.
Keeping track of the, keeping track of the Mylar pen.
In the Mylar pen, in the book.
He was going to close the file.
Right, stressful.
You told it, where are they?
Yep.
Are you cutting the line here?
You, you sign this one, and then I'll sign it.
Where'd the book go?
Where is the book? You got that?
The clerk lost it already, it's only right here, I gotta go. Yeah, same.
I'm signed on there, I'm waiting for you.
No paper. The clerk says no paper.
What is this? Yeah, we're gonna smo, we're gonna smudge for a minute.
The day that my brother over there was naming the blogs out, if you do, don't even get a drop on it, and they won't take it. So I came over with a garbage bag.
Alright.
Why do I have a civilian Mylar, who are we gonna discuss that?
I think, no, it's a, that's a registry requirement, isn't, the registry, registry still requires Mylar thing?
I believe so.
I thought they did, they'll take others now, but.
I'll change, cause I looked into it.
No, there was something.
I thought for A and R's, it was.
I don't know, I'm looking at the.
What was the thing that they, didn't wanna give us from the police station? A wet, wet something?
A wet stamp.
A wet stamp, right, and actually, it could be an engineer's stamp, right. Wet stamp, I didn't really want a wet stamp anyways.
Yes, that's true, but.
Okay.
So this goes with that? Oh, the check?
That was in the package. Normally it's probably already in the bag. What's that?
Which account is what I worry about.
You're right. No.
No, never. Alright, so I think we're all set, thank you very much.
Don't roll it up, let it, let it air a little bit.
I'd roll it from the other side and be all set.
Don't want a hail on it.
Thank you, what's that?
Don't want a hail on it.
I know it.
Thank you. Any questions, you may call. Thank you very much.
Alright.
Close your door, Jim.
I get new business, two sixteen West Boylston Street, checkerboard certificate of completion recommendation, so. We got a request from checkerboard to issue a certificate of completion in the zoning bylaws. It actually says the building inspector shall issue a certificate of completion, so we drafted, that's why I drafted this as being a recommendation to issue a certificate of completion.
To Bentley?
Yes. So people have had a chance to review it.
So why do we say in conformance of the West Boylston zoning bylaws?
Well, it's, it's in the bylaws, it says the, it's the board, I mean, the building inspector shall issue a certificate of completion.
Yeah, so we say in conformance of the bylaws, the plan born of West Boylston hereby recommends the building inspector, but we're just.
Yeah, we're just making the recommendation to him, so that he does.
He follows the law.
Right, well, so he can reference where it's from, so section three point six, so he knows if he has any questions. I basically took this because that's the wording I used, and we've always used for the other, the regular certificate of completions.
But what's the difference in the regulars?
I threw in the words recommendations.
No, you said we used to give out.
Oh, we do, cause, well, we had an agreement with the building inspector, the last two building inspectors, we would issue the certificate of completion, and they'd be okay with it, cause they really haven't done a site plan review. They said it made sense for you guys to issue this certificate of completion, but it's in the bylaws as the building inspector is.
Okay.
So we've got kind of a understanding.
We should change that bylaw.
We could change that bylaw, I, we had asked Bentley, I think, a year ago, to do, to allow us to issue certificate of completions, and we never heard anything from him. So if he had said, or if he sends us a letter saying you're okay with issuing a certificate of completion, we just do it the way we've always been doing it, and we sign off on it, but right now, we need to recommend that he do it. And this is at checkerboard, the only outstanding things they had were some drainage issues and fence around the dumpster, and those have been addressed.
I think it looks good.
Motion, what do you want to do, Ben?
A motion to recommend that the building inspector issue a certificate of completion.
I'll motion that.
Just, just to make, just to make it clear, this the checkerboard building?
Yes.
Yes.
Yep, the backside.
Around the back, okay.
Yeah, the side with the ultimate obstacles is.
Oh, okay.
On the west side street.
Shire, Shire, Shire.
Schrein.
Schrein, Schrein, yeah, Schrein, yeah.
Yeah, they, they made a parking lot accessible from Schrein Ave, and then.
Oh, alright, yes, yes, yes. Is that building vacant, is that building vacant, yeah?
No, it's, the ultimate obstacles is in there, and I think Checker is still closing up shop, and then the rest is.
I think they sold it, the people might still be doing something there, cause the equipment is still there.
Is it, I don't know, I haven't been in there.
The parking lots, I'm good.
I've just been to the ultimate obstacles. Parking lot's been empty for years, so that's, they were still doing business, but.
Second.
You have a second, okay.
Now, any discussion?
Any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I don't, I'm gonna see the sign direction, that's all that matters. Alright, two thousand and seven open space and recreation plan update. Since we have so much time here, I brought the plan with me, so I can read the whole thing to you.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's why I asked you, I'm like, is there a paper copy of that, cause when you sent that email to us, and I saw how long it was.
But we're gonna go, we're having a schedule now.
Well, it's, we added in an executive summary, so we have a one-page summary of the high, the higher importance items, but I guess C M R P C compiled it all, pulled a lot of good information together. And the open space implementation committee voted on Monday to support and approve the plan, for the planning board and the select board to approve it. We had a couple of little corrections that had to be made, because there was the wrong watershed noted for the southern portion of town, which I had missed on the first ones, and a couple other editing corrections, but nothing substantial.
That's quite a document.
It's actually, the section I like the best is the population section, cause it clearly talks about what's going on with the population, and there's a couple of sentences in there that describe the the fact that we only have, I think, what's the word, I think we have a hundred less citizens in West Boylston than we did in nineteen eighty.
Wow.
So everyone talks about the population rising and doing all these things, and the projections were that it was going to rise. If you don't count the thousand or eleven hundred general inmates.
Right.
Then our population has actually gone down since nineteen eighty.
Been a very long.
No, no.
I think they were eaten by the.
What's that?
The people were eaten by the Monworth peoples.
Yeah.
Or tipsy models.
Well, it could be the aging population too, yeah.
And people, yeah, people pay some places to live in towns that, whatever, the families move out because there's no place to live in.
Well, some, but it's also the affordable aspect, we had, in between two thousand, two thousand and ten, we got a building for Angelbrook and Hillside Hill. So that was two hundred and forty-six, I think, over fifty-five units, so that's why if you look at the statistics on the aging of town. We've gotten a significant amount older, or we've gotten a significant amount older in the last seven years, but reality is, is we got two hundred and something units, two hundred and fifty units almost, of over fifty-five houses.
Oh, that, yeah, that's.
Yeah, right.
But that's all in here, it's a, there's a lot of good information in it, C M R P C did a good job with it, and it's taken a while, but we've got, I think it's a good product.
So is this the only copy that there is?
The only hard copy, right.
You can bother.
Um, well, I was interested in looking through it, but I, um.
PDF would be nice.
We have.
He sent it through email, he sent it through email, and I'm not, I'm not an email person, and I saw how many pages it was, and I was like, I.
Oh, it's in the email, okay.
I don't like to read on that, so. Yep, I mean, it's, I think it's a good document, and I guess I'll leave it to the board to vote to approve it, or make changes, or. Or we have to send a letter?
I mean, I'm not gonna read the whole thing, I just kinda wanted to go through it and see what it was, I don't mind.
So who, who uses this document?
Parts commission, the open space, and it's gonna be included as part of the master plan. So, the master plan is two thousand and five document, we wrote the two thousand and nine open space and rec plan, and that got incorporated into the master plan, and so now we're two ahead of the master plan on the open space and recreation, so.
How long, I mean, I don't wanna take your only copy, right, though?
I have my comments in a document, in an electronic document. I have my comments in a document, in an electronic document.
Are you sure?
Yeah. Hopefully, we'll get an approval from the planning board tonight.
Maybe.
Approval from the selectmen next week, or in two weeks. And then, we send the letters off to, uh, Department of Conservation Services in support of this, and they will review it, and probably have a couple of questions. It'll come back. We'll make some minor changes, and then it'll get approved, and we'll be, uh, able to apply for grants for open space and recreation funds.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should approve it tonight, and, um-
We can make minor changes. If you, if there's some things that you know are big, we could talk about that. I haven't heard any, but-
No.
Because I've been-
I wouldn't have just made it.
Let's-
I know Mark had a lot of concerns, but I think I'm good.
I was dreaming and I was having trouble.
You were? Oh.
Why is the chair, do you have a conflict? Or is just that this was written?
Uh-
Um, exactly, just because I'm the chair of the Open Space Implementation Committee, so it just comes from-
Should have reported.
So, so I'm not just signing everything and saying it's all, it's all good?
Yeah. Second one's for me instead.
She's just signing that.
She's signing, yes.
Need the motion?
Yes, please.
Motion to approve the two thousand seventeen open space and recreation plan.
Second.
All, any further discussion, I guess?
No, just give me that, so you get the motion.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed.
Opposed. None?
Do we need a conditional?
Too late, road station. Motion to adjourn?
Additional on what?
Do we need one that actually has my signature on it, or no?
Yes.
You want me to just sign that one?
Yeah.
You could just say, yeah.
Uh, okay, August ninth meeting, impossible team date.
Can we put it fourth, uh, fourth Wednesday?
Fourth Wednesday, what's the date?
August, uh, will you check your phone?
You'll be here a while.
August-
Eight twenty-third.
August twenty-third.
Twenty-third.
Okay. Well, then, we'll need someone taking notes.
Yes, it's recorded there. It'll be recorded. She knows how, yeah, she knows how to read from the record. It's on record. It's on YouTube.
It's on YouTube?
Yeah.
Uh, I don't know. Okay. Um, can you make decisions without the phone bill? Don't, don't go there, it's- So, the August nineteenth, you can't make, what's the third Wednesday?
The sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
It'll be, uh-
Oh, yeah.
You just had seven to eleven.
Planning would want me to-
I should be able to do the math, right? All right, well, can people make the twenty, whatever it is, twenty-third?
I can make the twenty-third, yeah.
Very well checked.
I could make it, yeah.
I can make the ninth.
So Mark will take the minute.
I'll make it to the twenty-third.
They're not taking the minutes. Dave, can you take the minutes?
Can do the twenty-third?
No.
Yeah, she can do the twenty-third.
Right, so we've- So there's no minutes? It'll be a quick meeting.
Yeah, we, we hope it is.
Right.
No, we'll have to, we'll do minutes, you know, and we'll save it all till September.
Yeah, I know, that figures.
And why could, why didn't we do, why couldn't we do the ninth?
Uh, there's a conflict with the selectmen and, no, FISB, right?
Uh, uh-uh.
I mean, I don't have a conflict with the FISB.
They're supposed to be on the FISB, aren't they?
No.
Who's our FISB person?
Nobody.
Nobody.
There is not a FISB-
Oh, why would you want a planning board person on the FISB? That's true.
Because then the police station would come to us and, uh, town-
Nah, don't go there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we're doing the twenty-third?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, if we can.
So we're canceled on the ninth?
Yes.
See if I remember. My calendar.
You know, like, six weeks between, right? July twelfth to August twenty-third.
Well, this is not right, we'll get them for July and August, but-
Yeah, we just, that's why I want to get it posted soon, so people are aware.
Yeah, I will.
If they don't get it in July, like this Goddard one, he's now off until August.
I know. I, I love, no, I mean, Mark said, uh, no, this is more, no hurry. Fam, permits I got, the highway department, and a lot of the permits they're gonna do, some of the other companies, which is-
Okay, it's their choice.
I warned them, I told them why, but didn't seem to care, so, don't worry about it.
Okay. So the twenty-third, it's seven, do we want to do it at six?
I'll stick to zone.
Um, seven would be better, I'm sorry.
All right, okay. All right, we're onto the reports from other boards.
Oh, we, Affordable Housing re-approved our consultants.
Oh, good. Who's the consultant there?
Cog.
Cog.
Cog Inc.
Cog Inc.
Have you got it stamped?
Paul Stewart.
This is Paul Stewart, the woman.
Oh, all right.
Compagnie, the company.
The only one that applied.
Yeah, there was only one to pick on.
Okay.
So we debated for six hours and then came up.
All right, so that sounds good. Any other board meetings?
Uh, with that, can we go to the member committee assignments?
Sure.
So we-
Well, do we have-
If someone wants to switch-
Do we have any other boards that happen?
No.
Now, I was supposed to keep track of the selectmen minutes, but those don't get posted, uh, on a timely basis.
It's on YouTube. It's on YouTube.
You have to watch the meeting. You have to watch it.
Watch the meeting?
No, you don't.
So, you don't.
Can you say-
I didn't ask Nancy yet, because she's been on vacation.
She's on vacation.
That's what she just got.
The last one posted on the website is May seventeenth.
Yeah, she's been on the-
Yeah, but they must do the same thing we do. She has to probably bring those minutes to the next meeting, and then post them. They're almost like a month behind, because-
They're all that.
Or, yeah, that's the way it operates, because-
But if we, we're, Melanie's going to ask Nancy to send the copy to you.
Okay.
And then you-
Before they are approved, or?
No. We want to look at the approvals.
Soon as they're approved, yeah, okay.
We want to see the actual minutes.
So that way, though, that way they'll wind up getting to us quicker than if-
No, if you are keen on looking at this quicker, it'll be posted on the YouTube. You can Google West Boylston YouTube. So it's fun. You can watch it.
It's fun?
Yeah, you can fast forward.
It's almost as good as attending in person.
You can fast forward, you know?
I can imagine, almost.
Yes, uh, put it on your car, right? Listen to that.
Okay, all right, so we have that, so that's the boards.
Okay, yeah.
Now, you have something else for a board assignment?
So if, 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 uh, I cannot be on economic development, because there are two other selectments will be there.
Are you going to go back to it?
If someone wants to switch some other board, that's fine. If not-
I'll trade you CMRPC for economic development.
I'm on CMRPC too.
I'll see you in the razor.
I'm a select board, select board alternate.
If you just want to give it up, I'll take the, I'll just take economic development.
Sure.
That was the original.
And listen, I'll take the economic development unless somebody else.
Does anybody really want to be on economic development, Paul?
No.
Mark.
Somebody else can take that.
Mark's going to be the economic development instead of Raj.
Okay.
What do we have Raj on?
I'm, I'm just want, nothing.
Nothing at all.
What?
Oh, oh, that's not good.
You want townwide planning?
Yes.
Oh, that would be good for him.
Which one?
Townwide planning.
No.
Why don't you keep track of selectmen minutes?
You're awfully quick to say no.
No, not townwide planning.
All right.
Oh, you're on conservation.
He's looking at the conservation notes. He reviews the notes.
Yeah.
All right.
I, I review the earth removal board.
What?
I can, I can review the earth removal board.
Earth removal?
Oh, I don't know. It's a minute.
No, I'm not giving it up.
No, I don't want it.
All right, so I'll leave it at that. Prepare them for chick next year.
Oh, do I have to go with my?
Yes.
Yep.
And we have to do the, we have the conflict of interest in?
Oh, I gotta do the conflict of interest in, yes.
You have to do that anyway, but yes.
I hope you do that anyway, too.
Yes, we should get our confirmation stuff done, go and see the town clerk while they're in there and-
Is she in there now?
Get this morning.
No.
No. They don't work nights.
What's your effect?
I have to get that done.
All right, so now we go on to this- Citizens' comments. What hand did you think?
This.
Nothing.
About changing a zoning bylaw regarding, um, gross vehicle weight. No, uh, this, um, yeah, she's making a request to change the zoning bylaw, section five point two A, one F, um, to state that, um, the gross weight of a commercially licensed vehicle should be under ten thousand pounds. They feel that the town of Holden, which has a ten thousand pound gross vehicle weight, oh, it, is better for a residential neighborhood, so-
Only for residential neighborhoods.
Only for residential neighborhood.
You're saying-
Only for residential neighborhood, right.
The industrial area will be very upset.
Right, only for, uh, residential neighborhood.
At this time, we have eighteen thousand pounds.
Yeah, she talked, I need that, and I need this back to us.
Well, we would be the zoning manager.
Yeah.
Right, well, we could, we could propose it, or she could do it as a ten taxpayer petition.
Oh.
So she could do it, but it's easier and cleaner for us to do it. We should consider it worthwhile, because if it goes as a ten taxpayer petition, we're going to have to either-
No, is it, is it allowed for ten thousand pounds? That's the first question.
Apparently Holden is.
Yeah, but we don't know. We are taking it at face value.
Yeah, yeah, so, I think what we need to do is look at-
Yeah, we need to, we need to do some research and then find out.
Right, so I, I think we'll table this to our next meeting. Can you look into that?
Sure, definitely.
Would that, would that come to be?
Yeah, I think we should table it, only because, uh, the reasons, the noises, vibration, and then a resident, loss of enjoyment. I mean, that's all stuff that has been talked about with the gun range, and nobody in the town cared about that, so I'm not sure.
No, this one is a very, this is, this is a two, between two neighbors.
Depreciation of home values.
Yeah, so was the gun range.
Two neighbors.
So was the gun range.
And, uh, it's more than that.
No.
It's not directly-
They're talking about it, about the vehicle being parked overnight.
So, there is no-
Not trapped, not-
Right, I know, but the reasons why she gave.
No, the reason is in this-
Loss of enjoyment of property.
Yeah, she didn't do anything that makes it sound like she's annoyed with her neighbor parking their truck.
Well, it does. At the second page of the case-
I know what you're talking about. Uh, what I'm saying is, the reasons that she's giving are the same reasons that people have given for not having a gun range in their neighborhood.
Except for the road's too narrow, because the gun range is-
Yeah, you're right.
No, here, this is the bigger issue for that. There is a humongous truck parked over there, and then-
Over where?
The, so there are two houses like this.
I don't understand.
Two, two houses like this. So the big tractor trailer parked there, but only that, uh, the front.
It's the cab.
Yeah, one is the cab, and when they start, all the fumes goes through the fence and goes to their house.
I think there's already a bylaw that prevents that.
This is entirely different than, uh, what Sarell is talking. This, it, thus, all the fumes goes to their house.
Yeah.
So that's what they are talking-
So why don't they do that?
This has been in the court.
The second page talks about that.
You just say that's-
But why wouldn't this be a nuisance with the board of health and a nuisance standard?
Nuisance, yeah, they did, this is, this has been extensively looked at all the town boards.
So they've been, they've already gone-
All the town boards. So then, it's, then it was, it did go to the court, and the town did win the case. It's on our favor.
What was the court, what was, what was the case about?
Us. Why would we win? But was there a win? I know, but-
Town's favor, David.
Right. Town's favor what?
Because he cannot park the truck over there.
He can't park it, it's started.
He cannot park, he cannot have it in a single family residential zone.
So if he's not supposed- So why is he still parking there? Because he's appealed-
Should be.
He's what?
He's appealing, he's appealing the court's decision.
So what does this have to do with the gross, with the gross weight?
So she wanted to-
Should not be able to do that, but only in spots, because he's appealed, he can't.
It's just like when the building is, oh, right, when the building inspector defines somebody, like what they did with Dr. T, that's, once he puts it for appeal, that stops until the appeal is heard and is decided upon.
I'm not sure, you know, we, we received the final, uh, the judge's decision.
Okay.
So, there was some, some talk about that, but I'm not one hundred percent positive on the final judgment. But, the final judgment, I do know that that does favors the town. Uh, the reason what's, why she is asking for us to do something on this is, at this time, the allowed weight is eighteen thousand pounds vehicle.
To, to do what? To travel on a road?
You can put it on, no, you can park it on your residential area.
Does he park just the cab, or did he park the-
And the, the cab alone.
Alone?
Mm-hmm.
But-
But she wanted to reduce that from eighteen to ten, ten thousand.
But the gross vehicle weight-
He might even be over that.
Is, are you saying the cab is ten thousand?
No, the cab is less than eighteen thousand pounds?
You're talking about like twenty thousand, I think.
Just, just the cab?
I have no idea.
Just the cab, so.
I don't know.
So that's why, okay, that's why we're going to table this to our next meeting.
What I was going to say, just, the building inspector has one court for it. If I was you, I'd contact the building inspector, get the information from him, if he will tell you anything.
We need more of the actual- The whole thing is to be on the next little meeting agenda. Do you want to get her and the building inspector at the same meeting?
I think, you know, we'll do some work, and then we'll think about it next meeting.
Yeah, we'll come to this one, I think.
You think so?
That's all. So why don't we put them on the agenda, what we have for time on that agenda?
If they want to do it here. Go ahead, whatever it's got to happen. We're going to have two firsts, we've got, well, that's not very much.
That's the signature, right?
Seven forty-five, we'd say about eight fifteen to, for the, um, for the hearing, seven forty-five, eight fifteen, I don't know.
Half an hour, forty-five minutes. Probably forty-five minutes, cause it's the first time, you know?
Maybe we should have that, you know, the obvious one, though?
Yeah, maybe.
No, why don't we get it on there, and if no one shows, we'll at least have, we'll ask the building inspector, do you, since you're-
No, eight thirty would be for the, for this one.
For this one? Okay.
Wouldn't it? Is that what you're saying?
No, you know what, you know what the different times are.
Yeah, eight thirty would be this one, yeah.
Yeah, for the ones talking.
Yeah, yes.
This, this truck weight.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so just asking for the background on what is the difference between ten thousand and eighteen thousand? Not you, Mrs. Shepherd.
Oh.
We can send, we can respond to the app, the person who wrote that letter to say, we'll put you on the agenda.
I can do that. I'll tell her if I talked to her last week, so I gotta read one of them, so.
So the information we're looking for is what's the difference between ten thousand and eighteen thousand? How many vehicles will that trigger? Cause I remember a town meeting when we were talking about that weight, there was a question of what would limit, and people thought that it would be reasonable to limit it to no, I thought it was no, uh, trailer cabs.
Tractor.
Tractor trailer cabs, but I don't remember what the specific word was. I remember there was a discussion that they don't want big stuff. If someone, what if someone just got a pickup?
But they thought they were already working.
It is, that's why it's eighteen thousand. But I thought that was when it's a pickup truck.
And there's also heavy equipment, like you couldn't have like a Digger or something like that, that you leave in New York?
Um, yeah, but, but the idea that, that the town meeting was more, um, was more, we want a lot of people who have a pickup truck, they have a business in their pickup, to park at home. So I think that's where they set the eighteen thousand pounds. I don't know.
Well, okay, if we wanna do that, yeah.
Under eighteen, all the way down, under eighteen.
Under eighteen thousand.
I think that tractor probably exceeds eighteen thousand now, if they wanna file that.
That's, I don't know. Yeah, I assume that would be-
It may be over eighteen thousand pounds or something.
Right, and so even, so if it turns out that the tractor trailer is more than eighteen thousand pounds, he's in violation of zoning, and he has to get rid of it, whether he appeals something or not. The zoning bylaw currently says eighteen thousand pounds, so if he's in violation, he's in violation.
Actually, if we're gonna give any feedback to this woman, I would say that.
Well, no, I think what we'd say to her is that she's open for the next meeting, cause we haven't really got our facts together, but when we talk to the building inspector-
Can I email her with that little tidbit and say, why don't you see if it's over the eighteen thousand?
You can. Don't tell me that, though.
Well, she gave all this information.
I know, just don't tell me. You're not acting as a board on that.
No, it would be a personal thing.
So the building inspector was present of that-
Yeah.
In- involved in that legal case?
Building inspector's on enforcement agent, so he has to do all this stuff.
It's a very lengthy case. It's a very lengthy, it's been going on for a year.
The bylaw itself says no commercially licensed vehicle in excess of eighteen thousand pounds gross vehicle weight, except school bu, school buses or a farm vehicle, and construction equipment during actual construction on the site shall be parked overnight in a residential district.
Right.
That's it.
Yeah.
Pretty clear.
Mm-hmm.
But the trick is, is eighteen thousand too high.
Eighteen thousand, yeah.
And I don't, I don't know numbers. So that's what we want, building inspector, actually, he'll know.
Right. Right. What's the practical, what's the result of lowering that, you know?
Well, if they think it's already over eighteen thousand pounds, the result will be nothing.
No, as you said, it could affect the other-
But why was there a court case if it's against the zoning bylaws?
It sounds like the, the case-
I think Mark cannot park his truck over there, his house. Light truck, yeah.
Do you see light truck? It sounds like it was a-
It sounds like neighbors couldn't agree.
They, they went to court, just, just reading what she wrote.
Yeah.
It sounds like they went to court because the zoning enforcement officer told them to get rid of the truck, and he didn't. So he's in violation of that ordinance, and that's why they went to court.
Okay, okay.
Just leave that thingy.
Well, he was asking why they went to court.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
Alright, so that's July.
For what time?
Eight thirty.
Yeah, it's like eight thirty right now.
You might be able to move them in sooner, if you're, if something goes well.
Okay.
Alright, any other citizens' comments?
No.
Yes, sir?
She received an email from the building department, Austin Street, Newton Street. Name's some gentleman, came to us questioning it, Austin Street and seventy Newton Street. I guess he's been interested in following purchasing the property, and of course, everybody knows the whole history except for Mr. Anderson, he probably doesn't- Is that the two houses next to Chris? That's the one that had it. Okay, well, they finally, I spent eight hours here reading through all the documentation, and basically what it is, is that the two dwellings were on the property before there was ever even any zoning, so there was nothing that stated that it was illegal. It wasn't until afterwards that, when the zoning came in, that's when people started saying, well, it's not authorized. But the building inspector at the time said that it was because it didn't, you know, meet all this. And went to court, they lost. The, the owner of the property went to, um, the ZVA for special permit. At the, at that meeting, he withdrew, and he filed for a variance, and the variance he lost. The residents, the abiders filed an administrative appeal on that for two reasons. One had to do with the timing, in other words, where they were the timeframe of, of peeling, they're saying that they were never notified about the building permit, what was actually going on, even though there was a building permit issue. It was posted on the window, there was all kinds of signs, there was, uh, construction trucks were there, you know, everybody there could see what was going on, okay? So, um, that was it, and so now, after all that settled down, in two thousand fifteen, they came before the planning board, and you guys authorized them an A and R because it had nothing to do with the subdivision. As long, you can subdivide, you can separate the land, as long as it has, has nothing to do with the subdivision, this te, this property had nothing to do with the subdivision, so you did. Nobody was nice enough. I asked her to give me a copy of the file. I sat in that room over there and I read through the whole file, I looked at the plan and everything, I read everything that the building inspector, the building department had, the ZVA had filed, it was about this thick, I read through all of that, you know, the town councils, all of that stuff. Anyways, I also went to the, uh, to the tax office, and that property is now sixty-eight Nutt, Newton Street, which is the one that has the big house on it, okay, and that is parcel one forty-three dash oh thirty-one, and then seventy Newton Street is the one that has the cottage on it, that is now parcel one forty-three dash oh thirty-one dash oh one, and now they're both being taxed as separate properties, as originally. So basically-
Are they in separate, so, that's an assessment, so that makes, that's fine.
Right.
What is the question that's before us, though?
The question before us is, this guy wants to know, is he gonna have any problems if he purchases the land, you know, um, person buy, the person buys these properties, will he be able to use the second dwelling without violating any zoning bylaws? Yes, because you guys gave him an A and R.
We gave him an A and R that specifically on it says, there's no compliance with zoning is noted. All the A and R said is that this building existed prior to-
Right, which means that he can, he can rent it out.
Which means that he can divide the property under an A and R.
Right.
So that doesn't mean that he can rent it out, that it's up to the building in, or the zoning enforcement agent, which is the building inspector.
No, it's not.
Why not?
Because the fact is, is that, that's why it goes back to the fact is, is that the dwelling was on the property before there was any zoning enforcement.
Right.
So it's legal. In other words, our zoning bylaw says that only one habitable dwelling on each property, there was two on this property, but that's because the, both of these properties, or both of these dwellings were built before that zone was owned.
So it's grandfathered.
Till it's grandfathered.
But now, why was it split up into two properties?
Now it's two separate properties.
This is the houses for sale, with the-
On Newton Street?
Yeah.
Yeah. And what this, I wanted to know from the building department is, is, is he gonna be, if he buys the, if he buys those two properties, okay, is he gonna be, and he wants to rent out the cottage, cause he's gonna live in the big house, I assume, and rent the cottage out, is he's gonna be violating any zoning bylaws? No, he's not.
Well, that's, that's-
But that's up to the building inspector.
I'm not saying you're wrong, it's the building inspector's decision, it's not-
Yeah, what about the planning board has to do with this?
What would he be in violation of?
Well, no, it's a residence.
It's a grandfathered existing condition.
Because, I think it's cause it's a single family area. Single residence, and because the fact is, is that you're not supposed to have two dwellings, two separate dwellings on, on one property.
But that create, that's a whole- Yeah, that's in the zoning bylaws, but those properties predated the zoning bylaws, it doesn't-
Right, exactly. So that's why he's not gonna violate any zoning bylaws.
Right.
Because it didn't, it didn't, the, the zoning by, bylaws did not apply.
He's grandfather, he's violating the zoning, but he's grandfathered, so he's allowed to violate the zoning.
But that determination has to come from the building-
It's the building inspector, he's the zoning enforcement agent, they're not.
Yeah, so we have nothing else, nothing to do with this.
Right.
Well, we had a conversation today.
He said-
Well, thank you for your comment.
You know, he basically-
Who, the building inspector? But he's the zoning enforcement officer.
Looking for eight hours today, talking about-
I know, but he, he's the zoning enforcement officer. How does he not understand it's his decision?
It, he, I don't see how it is his decision. There's no decision to be made, there's no violation. Well, they're asking a question, and there's something he has to respond to.
The person is asking a question about zoning.
Right, and they sent it to, and they sent it to us.
Right, but the person who interprets the zoning is the building inspector. It says in the-
I mean, it sounds like his answer should be, there's two separate pieces of, two separate lots here, so no, he's not in violation. Right, that's it.
But it's his, we could say that they have to file, but if the building inspector says they don't have to file, it's the building inspector's whose vote carries. He's the enforcement authority.
Well, when, when Prodo was here, he was the one that ruled and said that they weren't violating, that the two buildings could be there. So when you guys gave him the A and R, basically, that eliminated the problem. He's not violating the law.
Yeah, but, but the planning board is-
Makes it two properties, or two-
Again, you know, planning board is not the one to say, yes or no. It has to come from-
That's why it says on the-
Let me just type, and I'll shut up about this. It goes back to the same property that the guy had with the build, there was a house in the middle, he had sixty feet of frontage on one, and forty feet of frontage on the other, and you guys approved an A and R for him to sell that forty, forty feet of frontage. So now he only had sixty feet of frontage, which is totally against the by, uh, totally against the bylaw. So, uh, but because it was in the subdivision, an A and R can do that, okay?
If they're-
So this is the same thing.
No.
This does not, neither one of those properties have-
No, and the other one that you're referencing, the one that you're referencing, it was specific statements made by the planning board, that they understand that they're reducing it below the zoning, and that they're specifically allowing that one situation to have that happen. That's not occurred on the others, so that's why it's different.
But here's the thing. Okay, but he came, he came before us, getting a special, to get a special permit to do that, and we denied it, and then he came to you, and you approved it.
Yes. What's that, that's two separate things. That's why you have two, there are two different boards.
Then why even, why do we even bother having a frontage? I mean, if this, if he's coming to the ZVA, he's- Well, that's your board's all about. That's the whole thing they have front-
Yeah, but this is, no, it's been, it's been done, so it's too late.
Well, that, exactly.
But that one slide, there were special conditions, the town was owning the back property, there's a whole bunch of-
Okay, so basically what you're saying is, is the building inspector's gonna make the decision.
Yes.
On this decision. So basically, what he's gonna be, what he's gonna tell the person is, is that there's no viol, you're not gonna violate any zoning laws because it's his decision.
It's his decision, I think that's one thing.
The neighbors may appeal it, but it's his decision to make.
There's nothing to appeal.
Any decision the building inspector makes can be appealed.
Do you? It's already been appealed and they lost.
No.
Who lost?
If he makes a decision today, that can be appealed tomorrow.
Yeah, but you know, they can appeal it, they can appeal it, they can go to the-
I don't know, or I don't expect them to, but don't, just so you're clear, if the building inspector makes a statement, it can be appealed.
Chris is your, on your board. Ask him what he thinks. He's a neighbor and on your board. He told me it's grandfathered.
What's, what's been, what's been the use of the cottage? Has it been occupied all these years?
Yes, yes. No. It's been on the- But I think it continues.
No.
It hasn't, it's been occupied, it's been occupied for two years. If a building is on your property that has been empty for two years or more, then it's not grandfathered anymore. This property, this cottage has been used, yes.
So why are the neighbors upset? Why are the neighbors upset?
I don't know. I, the last time I looked at, I thought it was, if there's a structure inhabited with structure, it didn't say that it had to be inhabited continuously since nineteen fifty-four.
It's the same thing that happened when the guy, when Big Daddy came before the ZVA.
That's a different, that's a different situation.
We tried to tell him that the building was, wasn't being, nobody was living in that, in the motel for more than two, for two years. He said, no. We said it was one year. He said it's been a year and a half. State law says it has to be empty for two years, so that's why he got what he got.
That was a different section of the rules. That our bylaws in Westboyston said one year, which get overruled by the states. So that process is correct, but it's not the same thing in that.
And it's the same thing the town council said when I read it today, about the two year, that it did not, it did not-
The two year, yes, that's all the two years. So the two year is one section of section eighty-one.
So some of you live in it, it's not empty for more than two years at any given time, cause one of the guys-
How tall is this?
You get, that's, in that, so that's alright, the hotel and the use doesn't change, or it doesn't, um-
I think they're trying to unit, to reduce the number of units.
The use does not get denied after one year, it gets denied after two years, cause that's what the state law is. The use is one thing. You're talking about over at sixty-eight or seventy Newton Street of falling under, I think it's eighty-one T or eighty-one W, another section of the law, it says if a structure existed prior to the enactment of the subdivision regulations, or the zoning regulations, I mean, if it, or I guess, yeah, one of those, whatever the nineteen fifty-four date is, but if it existed prior to that, doesn't have to be occupied ever since then, because there were situations where it's been a small shed, or a large shed, or a-
I think this is one, so not as a chicken coop.
Right, well, no, not this one.
But it's always had running water in it, it's always had this, that, and so.
That, which is good, right, which makes it, but it's not, it doesn't have to be in use, is all we're saying.
What's the matter? I'm totally confused, because to me, after reading everything that I read today, it, you know, talking to the building inspector, it doesn't seem to be any zoning violations.
There's not.
It should, it should have never been, the building permit that they gave out back in two thousand eleven to rehab that cottage should have never been given out.
Why? No, let's go there.
It does, it's, uh, but it just, it should have never been done, but it was done, it was taken care of, it was po, everything was posted. So, now, I just wanted to bring it up to let you know that that's what was going on, if you hear anything about sixty-eight and seventy, it's two separate properties, and this guy wants to know if he buys it, is he gonna have any problems with zoning violations? And I, after, like I said, after everything that I've read, I talked to the building inspector, he said no.
So he didn't came to the ZVA?
No, don't go there, just, and, it's, no, we just, we just need the building inspector, and that's it.
No, 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 no. Oh, that's a building ins, no, 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 I'm, I'm asking where he got the information.
Yeah, he said he got an email to the ZVA.
Oh, okay.
Alright, so can we move on to reviewing minutes of the last meeting?
Yeah, I'm making motion to approve the meeting minutes from May twenty-fourth, two thousand seventeen.
Based on the, can I make one, or ask a question? Well, can this one, we do the economic development, can we make an edit at the following meeting, just because that information changed, rather than-
No.
No.
A meeting that happened at the meeting.
Well, I mean, we can make it clear that this is what happened at the meeting, and the next one-
No, this, no, this- Next min, minutes.
These meeting minutes are correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, but they're correct, but misleading, is what I'm, my point.
No, the following minutes will correct that.
Yes, they will, but these, if you read this one, you're gonna think it's you.
Yeah, don't worry.
It's okay.
Phew, I never read minutes of them.
Yeah.
Okay, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's fine.
Oh, you went there, oh. Four or five.
Any bills, most in total, Jen?
Any bills, or?
No, no, those aren't it.
Most in total, Jen?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Three plus. Alright, so.